Silence. The October meeting of 2024 for Breckin Township's zoning board is now in session. Rise from the national anthem.
I'd like you to leave.
I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave. I'd like you to leave.
Okay, the notice of this meeting has been, as required, as the Open Public Meeting Act, and the annual notice of meetings, a copy was posted in township website, notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel, and a copy was posted here in the municipal building.
Mr. Leo?
Here.
Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Garafalo?
Here.
Mr. De Cesarie?
Here.
Mr. Hamel?
Here.
Mr. Felici?
Here.
Mr. Iglesias?
Here.
Chairman Grabner?
Do you all look at the minutes of the last meeting? Shall we make a motion to be approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? Just want to inform the public, anybody here for Visconti, Mr. Varelli has an announcement to make on that regard.
Yes, anyone here for Visconti Brothers Properties LLC for an amended major site plan application, that's a 4801 Lake Road, they have requested a postponement. It will now be heard on Wednesday, November 6th, so it's not a Tuesday, because the elections are Wednesday. Wednesday, November 6th, at 7:00 at this location. If you're here for that, you will not be getting any additional notice, because they did properly provide notice already. If anybody's here tonight, you're welcome to leave if you wish.
We're going to hear ZV 2402 under Garden State Harvest.
Good evening members, I'm Mr. Verne from the Law Firm, so to present Mr. Verne, on behalf of the applicant, Garden State Harvest, our host. So I represent Garden State Harvest, the contract purchaser of the property at 1746 Stanton Avenue, its block 1002, 03, lots 8, 9, and 10 on the tax map. The property is located in your RA Presidential Agricultural Zone, and contains an existing vacant school building. This is an application for a use variance approval to convert the existing building into a state licensed Class 1 and Class 2 cannabis cultivation and processing facility. With this application, we are seeking use variance approval only. We have bifurcated at this application, so that if the use variance is approved, we will come back to the board with site plans to seek site plan approval from the board. In other words, we ask the board to approve the proposed use, with the understanding that the board will have further opportunity to review the specifics of the site and the layout of the site, and the proposed development of the site before the business can become operational. Now, I understand this board has seen other Class 1, Class 2 cannabis cultivation and processing facility applications, some of which have been denied for various reasons. So before we get into the testimony tonight, I think it's worth emphasizing that this proposed development has some key distinctions, which we feel are important to emphasize, because they make the, those distinctions really do make this development particularly suited for this property. Now, this, as you'll hear in the testimony tonight, is a micro business. So it is small in scale, just a few hundred plants proposed for cultivation. It has a limit on the number of employees. The operations are small enough that all of those operations can be conducted fully inside the existing building, without any significant new development being required or proposed. Because the operation is indoors, the applicant is able to control the environment, control the operations, and put systems into place to address, among other things, odor, which is always an issue that comes up on cannabis applications. Now, you'll hear testimony tonight from our witnesses, that the systems that we will put in place to address odor may, will demonstrate that odor is not going to be a significant concern on this application. The applicant is proposing a state-of-the-art odor control system, which utilizes what's known as a nanoparticle atomizer. The system renders odor molecules inert, effectively neutralizing them. So in other words, we feel confident there's not going to be any adverse odor impact from this proposed use. There won't be any noise impact, there won't be any light impact, the business is only going to be operational during daytime business hours, closing at approximately 6:00 PM. There's minimal traffic, because of the small number of employees on the site, the fact that there's no retail component, this is purely employees on-site with a few periodic delivery, pardon me, deliveries and periodic loading, just a few deliveries on a given week. So from a traffic standpoint, there's also going to be minimal, if any, impact from this proposed use. As I alluded to earlier, there's going to be no retail component of this operation, it's purely cultivation of a plant and processing of a plant. And of course, there is no consumption of any kind of cannabis on the property. This is purely the growing processing of a plant within the existing building, with all the environmental controls that are being testified to by the applicant, and to which I alluded to earlier. So based on all of that, and with the testimony that you'll hear from, pardon me, our witnesses, we think it's clear that the nature of this proposed micro business within the existing building made a perfect fit for this site. And about only the scale of the use, that caused me to say that, but as I'm sure the board, the board is all aware, this site houses a former school building. It's been vacant, dilapidated, become lighted over the past 20 some odd years, it's not in the best of shape. It's been abandoned and lighted for a long time, it's being vandalized constantly, it's overgrown. The applicant proposes to buy this property from the current owner, and bring this building back to life. Through adaptive, or reduce specific system structure, we will bring this building back on your access, and keep this building from being an eyesore. Now, as I mentioned, we are here tonight seeking use variance approval. Under the law, to be granted a use variance, it's our burden to establish certain proofs, having a positive criteria and a negative criteria. We think it's clear that a use variance is well justified in this case. So with respect to the positive criteria, a use variance may be granted where the board finds that the proposed use will meet one or more purposes of zoning, including that the site is particularly suited for this use. For those reasons I went through earlier, we believe it's clear that this site is particularly suited for this particular use. It's a micro business, it's within, these things improvements on the site, with minimal need for new improvements, and this use allows this building to be brought back to life. In addition to the use, if it combines with the structure, the use fits really well in line with permitted uses in your zone. So this is, of course, an agricultural zone, and Garden State Harvest intends to implement an agricultural use at this property through a process known as controlled environmental, controlled environmental agriculture, otherwise known as CBA. It's a fast-developing field of agriculture, which provides for a more controlled environment and a more efficient crop production. Now, these are operations which take place in agricultural businesses throughout the region, and Garden State Harvest intends to utilize those same types of operations here. Now, and that's in the context of this particular crop. The same use that we are proposing here tonight would be permitted for this property in this zone for any other crop. It's solely the specifics as to this crop which require a use variance. But in light of the similar processes, the similar operations that are going to be conducted, similar to any other agricultural related operation, we think that this use is going to be entirely consistent with the agricultural operations that are permitted in this, in this zone and for this property. So we think this proposed use is particularly suited, is particularly suitable from a zoning standpoint as well. Now, with respect to the negative criteria, we must show the proposed use will not cause a substantial detriment to the public, or to your master plan, or ordinance. Again, we think it's clear there will be no substantial detrimental impact. Now, that's because of those reasons I already went through briefly earlier. A small scale of the business, the minimal traffic impacted the business, the lack of odor, the lack of noise, the lack of lighting impacts. For all intents and purposes, this is a business that neighbors are unlikely to even know exists on a day-to-day basis, and for those reasons, and others I know here through the testimony of our witnesses, we think it's clear, we think it's clear that this use satisfies the negative criteria for the grant of a use variance as well. Now, here with me tonight are Eric Axelson, the principal of Garden State Harvest.
Hold on one second. Can you have them come forward? I need your witnesses that are going to, you're going to use, I'd like to swear them in.
Sir.
Raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth. Well, you got, you got one more.
One more.
You're going to tell the truth of your testimony?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your name and addresses to the secretary, please. Start at the left.
Top of the OBD, RDUF, 216, Golden Valley, Navio, Moorestown, and Lodo, RDS200.
Thank you.
Eric Axelson, 36, Fort Apple, Happy Ranch, New Jersey.
Lee Gilmore, professional engineer, 2205 Delsey Drive, Franklinville.
And Tiffany Morrissey, M-O-R-R-I-S-S-E-Y, 700 question drive in Galway, professional player.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, this mic is not working, you've got to figure a way to get a little bit more volume, crank yourself a little bit, because none of us can hear you back. Okay, all right. That was my message. Let me show you all a little bit. They can hear it, this is the wrong with the sound.
No, it's his mic, I think.
Yeah, it is. You speak like we're in a talent show, you have to get a little bit more safety. All right, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so this close?
Got it. All right. You could probably raise that up a little bit, there's the little adjustment right in the middle, I mean, you don't have to bend over that way.
All right, hopefully this is better?
Yeah. Yeah, there's got to be a couple inches from it there.
Yeah, I'll do my best to stay close. All right. So we will have testimony from the four planned witnesses who were just sworn in, and I also have a few exhibits.
And, yeah.
All right. So we do have planned testimony from the four witnesses who were just sworn in, and I do have some planned exhibits, which I can hand out to the board now. But with those introductory comments, I will hand out the exhibits, and then I'd like to call Mr. Gilmore to provide testimony first. The first is A1, which is a rendered copy of the site plan that was submitted with the application. A2 is a collection of photos of the property. I'm sorry, A2 is a photo of the exterior of the property. A3 is a photograph of the interior of the property. A4 is another photograph of the interior of the property. As is A5. A6 is an architectural rendering of the proposed improvements. A7 is a proposed floor plan. And A, it consists of two pages, and A8 is the proposed security plan. Before your start, I'll need your qualifications, please. Mr. Gilmore, can you give the board a brief overview of your qualifications?
Yes, I have a bachelor's of civil engineering from Jackson University, I'm a licensed professional engineer, State of New Jersey. I have about 35 years of experience in civil engineering. I run site civil engineering here in town as a principal, and I've been accepted by various municipalities throughout New Jersey as an expert in civil engineering.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. All right. Mr. Gilmore, your office prepared a use variance plan for this application, is that correct?
That's correct.
And exhibit A1 is a rendered copy of that plan, correct?
Correct.
All right. Just by reference to the plan, can you just give a brief overview of what's existing on-site currently?
Unfortunately, I lost my eagle, eagle last year, so he ran away. So this is the color rendering of the site, Chris has described, the plan wrote this straight up on the plan. Sheridan Avenue is horizontal on the page on the top, and Stanton Avenue is on the left-hand side, vertical on the page. The colored area of the site represents the site itself, it's comprised of three lots, a total of about 4.45 acres. One lot, the school contained on has something from Sheridan and Stanton, and the second lot has just frontage on Stanton, which is a smaller lot. There's a larger lot, about three and a half acres, 3.3 acres, that has just frontage on Sheridan. But the application is for all the lots, as some of the permits would occupy parts of those lots. Existing, we have the existing school, it has a one-story building with a basement, it has access to the first floor by a series of ramps on the side that faces Sheridan Avenue. It has a series of ramps on the south side that have access to the basement, the lower level. There's a front access area that's visible from Stanton as well, and there's also an access in the rear of the property. The site does have a parking lot now, although it's hard to see, it's overgrown and in repair. We plan on reviving that, overlaying it, and creating a parking area, as well as fence around the back for security purposes, and you know, meet all the other items in the code, the planning accounts, as far as building management, lighting, landscaping. Again, this is just kind of a picture, just to illustrate what it would look like if it was certainly back here, and it's approved for site plan approval, and flush out all those details. Building is rather close, existing is 22 feet roughly from the property on Stanton Avenue. So what we propose to do is eliminate the series of ramps on the side of the building that faces Sheridan. There's the existing septic system that's failed, that's on the corner of Sheridan and Stanton, we'll be replacing that, upgrading that to a compliant MEB, Wall Street County Health Department septic system. I believe we'll be recovering the well, as part of the process water, we will not be releasing anything into the groundwater, they have a tank, so my understanding is that with part of the hydroponic growth of it, they reuse that process because it has rich in nitrate, so they want to use that as long as possible. When it is spent, it'll be the holding tank, with NADP authorized service contractor will come and pick it up and dispose it. So we know, we're least anything to the groundwater. As Chris mentioned, everything more current side of the building, there's no sales of any kind, there's no signage proposed, it's non-script. I have a rendering of the building, I can show that.
Yeah, yeah. We'll be there, so, so obviously, the site is not fully engineered yet.
Right. That's correct.
Okay. But based on the plans that you've prepared thus far, and what's depicted on your zoning table, we don't anticipate to require any bulk variance other than one existing, not important to the building, is that right?
That's correct. We'll be compliant with the code, and we just get front yard setback, I mean, 75 feet, around 22, that's the distance.
And you anticipate that you'll be able to meet the state stormwater standards, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And can you speak briefly as to what's proposed as far as landscaping?
Yeah, so we'll have a stronger infiltration basin in the rear, that'll be landscape, we're going to put foundation landscaping around the building, around the perimeter, again, if you're six-foot-high fence, with four or five gatekeepers, we're going to be some shade trees added, obviously the lawn will be re-vegetated, because it's overgrown and kind of on hemp right now, so that'll be brought up to the rest of the character of the neighborhood.
And if you could, can you show what is proposed as part of the architectural improvements to the building?
It's still rendering the exterior, face of Stanton, you can see it's the same, same basic shape of the building. For the regulation, my understanding is, the public cannot do any of the growing operations inside the building. So the buildings that are longer perons will be removed, these will be kind of like a faux window, you have an parrot sense of window. This is the architect, the cues come from, kind of like a barn, a modern barn, with the plaque. Again, this side that faces ramp, removing all that ramp network area, it's going to be replaced, the doors will be removed. The only access into the building will be from the front, which if anybody wanted to come in, visit, there's two, three parking spaces that are not gated, and for access, we don't really anticipate anybody to come, there's no sign to adjust what it is, or acknowledge what it is. There's two parking, three parking spaces available there, the rest of the parking space are all in the rear, in the secure area. There is a door to the lower area, that has access from the east side, and then there's going to be a door in the rear where all the deliveries and when it's processed, everything will take, take place in the rear yard in that secure area.
And Tom, we hope Mr. Axelson, thank you. I'd next like to call up Mr. Axelson, the principal of the applicant. Mr. Axelson, you are the owner of Garden State Harvest, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. You're currently under contract to purchase this property?
Yes.
Okay. Now, before we talk about your proposal, I would like to know a little bit about the current state of the property. Can you describe the condition of the property?
Currently, the property is owned in the state, the property was purchased back in, I think, 1999 by Dr. Willie Carter. Nothing is, the property's been vacant since that time, they did a minor, they did some rehabilitation to it, they put a new roof on the property in 2005, they upgraded the electrical system at that time in 2007. The property has not had any utilities since 2007, because they got the, halfway through the approval, on the electrical roughing work was all done, and then it was never completed. There is no utilities to the property. It's blighted, the recent pictures of the recent graffiti, that's all within the last year, that all happened over the month of August, and, you know, it's a blighted building, and it, there's nothing that has gone in there, and unfortunately, there's probably not going to be anything going in there either, just because of the condition of the property. It needs a major reacquisition at this time, I mean, it's just not economically viable to, unless you're talking about a high-valued crop, like cannabis, coming in and growing it there.
What's your experience with this kind of project? And I don't mean the building end, I mean the growing end.
I started down this path in 2017. In 2018, I started Garden State Harvest officially as a business, I rented a farm over in Piles Grove, that was 12,500 square feet of greenhouse space. I grew, I had license number seven in the state to grow cannabis through the hemp program that was administered by the Department of Agriculture. I grew about 1,000 plants myself, and my family, and my kids, and stuff, at this farm. We grew hydroponic lettuce in the main greenhouse, that was 8,500 square feet, and then in the other two greenhouses, I grew cannabis for CBD production in the two greenhouses and outdoor. So I had experience, I had three years' crops underneath my belt, growing it in the state of New Jersey, and I'm aware of all the pest pressures and the humidity issues, and the growing of the plant here in the state for 2020 to 2023, and I subsequently, you know...
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, so, so actually, this is actually a jump in right where I was about to, so I'm going to ask you about your experience, so, but, yeah, we just did that. So can you just explain to the board at a high level, what it is that you propose for this property?
I propose that, you know, this property is specifically suited to turn it into an indoor cannabis cultivation center. It's got four classrooms, each classroom would be an individual grow room, you would have, each room would be, you know, closed-loop, high, you know, technically highly advanced systems, you know, to go in these rooms. I know odor's a big issue with everybody. You can do a closed-loop air system. Todd over here is, works with Griffin Greenhouse Suppliers, I've been working with them for, since I started on the farm. I'm confident that I can remediate the odor, and control it, and control all the environments in this room. There's also, there's a processing aspect, I know that the license says a Class 2 manufacturing license, but it's not really manufacturing, and I don't really like that term, it's more processing. Whereas you're taking the plant down, not all the plant material suitable for the smokeable market, that's your highest margin for the, for the plant product, right? About 10% of the plant's growth can go towards that high-end, smokeable flower market. 90% of the plant ends up, you're processing it, turning it into an oil, which is then made into other products. That's where I would end the process, I'm just looking to grow the plant, and process the oil, and sell the flower and the oil out of the pot, and not, I'm not manufacturing any products there. I have manufactured products, I have a tincture and an oil, and a cream that I manufactured from the CBD hemp side of it, so I've dealt with third-party vendors and those kind of things. You know, it's, and that's kind of, I want to continue on that lines of the medical benefits of this plant that people, there's a lot more uses to this plant than people realize, and that's really what started me down this road, is if I can find an alternative product to help mitigate some of the pharmaceutical opioid destruction that was thrust upon our country, then that's kind of why I started down this road. There's a lot of medical benefits to the plant, and there's also John Adamovich here, who is an organic chemist from Rider University, he's way smarter than I'll ever be, and he and I are looking at the constituents, components of the plant, all the different compounds that come out of the plant, how we isolate them, how we extract them, how to, you know, make it profitable, and to come up with products that are not just your typical... your typical, you know, what most people think of when they think of smoke.
They're thinking of weed. They're thinking of weed.
Right. There's other products that, and other uses for this plant, and that's my focus.
So go back a second. You're saying you're not going to deal with the end result of some of them? Just with the, mostly with the oil, the beneficial part?
Well, no, because a top 10% of the flower, I mean, that's where the money is, right? That's, you know, that's selling for, as we heard in last month's presentation. That's where, you know, you're, right now in the state of New Jersey, it's the highest place for the wholesale flower. It's up around $3,000 a pound. So, you know, yes, I'm going to sell some flower to that market, but that's not the main focus of the drive. That's only really the very best of the flower. There's still 90% of the plant that's still usable material. Extracting that down into an oil and then making other products is really where I see the benefit and the focus of where I can make a difference.
Just to clarify for the public again, when you say sell, this is not a retail operation? There's no direct sales from this facility? You're processing?
No direct, no direct sales to no customers.
No one can walk in and buy anything?
No. No one can even come in the building that's not, you know, approved by the state. I can't have guests. I mean, it's not, and you're talking, my license is limited to 10 employees. I probably won't even have five or six.
I just didn't want someone to hear sell and think, oh, you can walk in and buy a joint, which that's nowhere near the case.
No, no. And I'm.
So, all right. So just to clarify with respect to your use and the sale of the product. So you're proposing a Class I cultivation facility and Class II manufacturing slash processing. So Class I, you'd be growing and cultivating plants, right?
Right.
And that would be in accordance with state license requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Class II, you'd be processing that plant into, pardon me, oils, for example. And again, that would be in accordance with state license requirements. Okay. And those end products, or the other products of the cultivation and the processing, those would be wholesale to other licensed vendors?
Correct.
Okay. So there would be no direct retail component whatsoever?
No.
Customers cannot just walk in the door?
No.
Is cannabis consumption permitted on the property?
Absolutely not. That's cannabis consumption and alcohol consumption are strictly forbidden by the state on the property. So, and the property is covered in security cameras that are cloud-based and accessible by the state police at any given time. So there's no way that I'm even going to have a beer on the property because why would I jeopardize my license to have a beer or, you know? It's just not something that will happen because everyone's job would be jeopardized by, the whole license could get yanked because it's on film and it's up in the clouds. The state can, police can access it at any time. So no, there's no consumption of any kind on the property.
Now, during my opening comments, I made some representations about the proposed micro-business and the scale of the operation. Was all of that true and accurate?
Yes.
So the scale of this business is such that it'll fit entirely within the existing building?
The micro-license for the cultivation side is limited to 2,500 square feet of canopy space. The four rooms' square footage adds up to a total of around 2,800 square feet between the four different rooms. So I'd have to pare that down a little bit. But you're really talking tables. Tabletop is how you calculate the canopy space of the plants. So there would be no more than 2,500 square feet. You know, you figure about 600 square feet per room, two and a half square feet per plant. You're only talking 250, 300 plants at the most per room. And you would stagger those rooms. The one room would be flowering at a time. Each room would flip about four times a year. You figure 10 weeks to 12 weeks. And the last two weeks of that are generally when the plant is in flowering state. And that's when most of the odor is, you know, that most people would have it, you know, that's when the plant's flowering and it's blooming, just like any other, you know, agricultural product.
Excuse me, I want to say, in the processing of this plant, can you talk a little bit about maybe well, the waste, I guess, right? Like in terms of water and just how does that, what type of, what's left over? And how is that disposed of and things along those lines?
Well, the, when you're getting that into the extraction side of it, John and I are investigating right now. We're on.
Pressing. Yeah, raws and press.
Right. He's looking at, into raws and pressing, which is just actually taking the plant and pressing it and squeezing the oils out of it. I don't think that's very efficient. We've also, majority of the industry is, it's done through ethanol extraction. It's, I want to say it's a tabletop kind of sized machine, but probably not how big it is, but about the size of that table. The plant material is ground up. It's run through a chilled ethanol. That pulls all the lipids and all the chemical components out of the plant. That's then distilled down, and you end up with an oil from that. The plant material coming out of that, like I said, it's been ground up. It's been, you know, everything's been extracted out of it. All the chlorophyll, the lipids, the solids, the waxes.
What's left over, I guess, after all that process is done?
It's just, you know, it's like, it's compost, really.
What do you do with it?
Compost it.
You recycle it?
And that is according to state, you know, that is according to state regulations. You can compost it in, you mix it in with the actual grass. Like if I cut the grass, I'll have a compost pile and I can put in there. If that's a problem, if that's an issue, what's that?
There's no odor associated with that? There's no odor associated with the.
No, because everything's been stripped out once you run it through ethanol. I mean, that just kills everything. And it's just.
Sends roots. Everything is just like normal.
It's just, you know, it's no different than your leaves of your grass. I mean, it's.
Okay.
You know. You, you, the ethanol rips literally everything out of the plant. All its chlorophyll, all its odor. There's nothing left to it. It's completely.
So you can't do anything but?
No, you can't. I mean, it's just compost.
To be clear, as a condition of approval, you would agree that your disposal of any plant waste would be in accordance with all state refineries regulations?
Correct.
So. All right. So I also made some statements during my opening comments that you're going to be conducting this operation indoor through what I refer to as CEA, controlled environmental agriculture, using agricultural techniques and processes similar to what would be used for any other crop. Is that true and accurate?
That is true. This is just like canola oil or olive oil or any other oil. You're growing a plant, you're planting a seed, growing a plant, harvesting flour, extracting the oil from the flour, having a byproduct. That's all it is.
And with respect to your agricultural supplies and equipment, you're working with Griffin Greenhouse, who supplies many other agricultural operations in the region?
Correct.
What's the hours of operation?
Seven to six, six days a week. And, you know, Saturdays will probably be a half day, just clean up kind of stuff. You know, two shifts maybe, depending on the workforce because 51% of my workforce has to come from the local area. So, you know, it's pretty decent height, you know, decent jobs.
All right. So let's speak to the operational details. So 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, six days a week. Maybe one of those days is a half day. I think you said earlier, your license would limit you to a maximum of 10 employees, but you're likely to have less at a given time. Okay. Let's walk through the floor plan so the board can understand the specifics of the. Well, before we do that, I had begun to go through some photographs, and I think we got off track. You're familiar with the exterior condition of the property, right?
Correct.
All right. Does Exhibit A2 accurately reflect the condition of the property?
Yes.
Okay. Not in that shape?
No.
What about Exhibits A3 through A5 showing the interior? I think you mentioned there's been some graffiti in the background.
That's recent as of August.
Okay. And so that's what's depicted in these visiting vehicles that take place in the property?
Yes.
Okay. So you'd be looking to clean up all those conditions to bring this property back into productive use. So, all right. Now let's turn to the floor plan. We'll look at A7. As my reference to the floor plan, can you just speak briefly to? Can you just explain briefly how this operation is going to function in the building?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, there's four classrooms throughout it, and they've been grow room one, two, three, four. They are existing. The walls are all there. You know, they're nice, they have nice high ceilings. Give you the height that you need, you know, to get the lights in and control the humidity, which is your biggest issues indoor grows. The center little room there, that'll be the propagation mother room. That's where you grow some plants, where you do all your cuttings and then propagate from those mother plants to grow out. You basically start it as a seedling and then propagate from that room. That's the upper floor. Then the lower floor. To the, it's coming in the back door to the upper, to the left. That is, would be the drying and curing room. That'll be a, about half that room would be like a walk-in freezer type of situation where it's controlled down to 60 degrees, maintained to cure the plant after it's been harvested to just, you know, you need, you need the plant to dry out to take about, take the water moisture down to about 10% before you really want to start processing it or anything. So that would be the drying room. Then there'd be trimming and curing also taking place in there. There's the two original old kids' little bathrooms. That are still there. The irrigation room would be in the center. That's where you would have your tanks, your holding tanks for all your water, all your nutrients. That would then be piped up individually to each individual room. Each individual room would have its own batch tank processing. So you can control the nutrients based upon that specific plant's genetics and what it requires. And the old kitchen, I have it labeled as an extraction lab. That already has a vent hood in it. That's why that kind of cleans up as a nice lab. That's where the extraction would take place. It also has a concrete ceiling because it was a kitchen. And the floor, it has a, you know, a floor drain down into the other room, the break room. It's laboratory and then just some conference room and office space up in the front there. All the floor drains in the building would go out to a reclamation tank. All the bathrooms and your normal waste would go out the other side to a septic system. The current, there are two septic systems there now. They are both failed and outdated. I did have them inspected by Cedar Creek Septic. And the reports were all ran up to the Department of Health, and they all came back failed. So they all need to be replaced as well. Like I said, and there's no gas line. There's no fuel source to the building. There's no electric to the building. There is a well way back in the middle of the property that would probably have to get re-drilled.
Can you just talk a little bit more about that? The drainage?
Sure.
What tank is that going to? Because I feel that's going to be a concern for the general public. In terms of use of it, there's a drain going to what kind of tank?
Well, it'd be a reclamation tank. So it's about a 2,000-gallon tank underground that has an alarm on it. Once the alarm hits three quarters, we get a signal. And then you have somebody come out that comes and pumps that out. That would be for all the floor drains in the property because people worry about stormwater runoff and the nutrients. It's, I understand it's a concern. It's not really a concern, in my opinion, when you're considering true agricultural farmers that are, you know, you're talking tonnage of acreage for fertilizer.
Nutrients will never leave a closing system.
And it will be a closing system that'll never leave the property. So it'll all be going down into there. And it's so minimal, anyway, it's kind of.
Yeah, you don't have a constant flush and runoff of liquid off the facility. It's.
No, no. These irrigation systems are extremely, extremely advanced. I mean, you're talking, I mean, it doesn't do me any good to take nutrient water and wash it down the drain. That's just why you're going down the drain. So the irrigation systems are, there's monitors within the bottom of the plants that monitor how much water it is and only give it what it needs until that's saturated. And then it pulls it back. And it could be, you know, towards the afternoon hours, it could be pumping every five minutes for 30 seconds. And then it stops. And then it pumps, and then it stops. And it, but it's never going to be just a constant flood of water. It's, you know, that's what it's for.
So where's this tank going to be located?
Uh, there is an existing.
This would be somewhere on the plant, right? I would imagine. One of the plants?
Maybe I am.
Right.
Where the bribery comes in, all the state. There's a, a damaged box there. That's approximately the area where there's an existing tank. It was a, it's a secret tank. And then it runs off further.
There's got a.
We just want to replace that and drop a 2,000-gallon closed system that'll be pumped out when it, you know, when it gets full.
Got you.
And that's for all the floor drains. So I'm not so much worried about, like I said, the irrigation water isn't really an issue. When the, when the plant is done growing and we harvest the plant out, cleaning that room, all of that, I could see that being more of an issue. All of that's going to be reclaimed in this reclamation tank because it's going down through the floor drain and not into the septic system. So there will be two septic systems. One specifically for cleaning and nutrients. And the other for your normal waste. And they're going out opposite sides of the building.
Mr. Axelsson, what type of deliveries that do you need for this even, and what frequency?
Very minimal. Just basically, you know, a small box truck once or two, once or twice a week. That would really be about it for, you know, office supplies and some products.
One or two a week.
One or two a week, but only during a certain time. That's obviously not going to be all the time.
Well, they wouldn't deliver when they're closed, right? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I mean, during the, just.
During the time when you're, when you're processing.
No, I mean, we may get, yeah, I mean.
You're getting the material in, but I'm talking about material out.
Oh, material out? Oh, yeah, that's only, like I said. It's four rooms. Oh, material out, oh, yeah, that's only, like I said, it's four rooms, they're going to be on a rotating schedule, about ten weeks apart, so every two and a half weeks, that would be, you know, that room would be harvested and dried, and so the product going out would only be about, once every two and a half weeks.
Okay, so incoming deliveries to the business might be one or two a week?
Yeah, office supplies, whatever. Yeah, one or two a week, it's not a whole lot, there's no tracking, basically.
And outgoing shipments of product to your wholesale vendors are, that would be every two, two and a half weeks?
Right. One or two, one or two. Sprinter vans or whatever, I mean, we're not talking one or two.
How about trash pickup? What volume of waste are we looking at?
Once a week.
Uh, one dumpster?
Yeah. Yeah, your normal, well, your dumpster.
And your dumpsters inside your security yard are regulated?
It's in the yard, it's behind the vents and all that, it's secure.
All right. I talked a bit earlier about odor mitigation. Odor is frequently raised as a concern on cannabis applications of, you know, this type. Can you discuss at a high level your plans for odor mitigation?
As far as odor mitigation, as I was saying earlier, the four grow rooms will all be closed-loop systems, they'll have a charcoal filter on any airflow going in and out of that room within the building itself. And then, I've been working with an outfit known as Cannabusters, they are a national, a national odor mitigation company that's, you know, other states have, this industry's been around for twenty years, there are other states that are a heck of a lot further along than we are, and odor can be mitigated, and there's systems out there that can do it. This system creates, basically, we have an exhaust fan on the entire building that creates negative pressure in the building, takes all the air up out this fan that's constantly running, all the, the airflow goes out, as it comes out, there's an atomizer that takes the solution, turns it into a nanoparticle that attaches to the odor molecules, and then it makes them inert, and that's, that's the system. I mean, and it would be a double, like I said, it'd be, it's a little overkill, but I understand it's a big issue for a lot of people, and I'm willing to do whatever odor mitigation systems need to be in place.
And again, you talked about the scale of the proposed operation, so you're looking at approximately how many plants at a time?
No more than five hundred plants would be flowering at any one time, the rest would be in either the head or the other states whether or not.
You're talking about the state of Florida?
Florida.
So you're watching two thousand total plants, the only part of the plant? They couldn't hear. They're looking at your factory. Move your seat up. How about the audio system?
All right, so we're, so we're looking at approximate, or at a max of approximately five hundred plants a flower at a given time, right? And again, this is a fully indoor operation, and the fact that it's an indoor grow as opposed to an outdoor grow, you're better able to control the environmental input as well as the output.
Right.
And it's limited period of time during the grow cycle when odor is an issue, right?
Yes, that's, again, the odor is, you know, when the plant is flowering, which is generally, you know, it's six weeks of the length of a plant's life cycle out of the ten weeks, so two rooms would only be going at the same time, so you're talking a total of five hundred plants total.
You're confident that this system will function as intended and will be able to mitigate odor?
Yes, yes.
Do you anticipate that this use is going to cause any noise impact to neighbors?
No, none.
How about lighting and back?
Now, the camera systems are very sophisticated, they don't really need a high amount of light. Again, our operation hours will probably be about six o'clock, so I don't foresee any, you know, other than normal security lighting that can be on a timer, or photosensitive or photo sensors or whatever, I don't really see it being an issue.
You mentioned security, so can you just speak at a high level, propose as far as that security, not necessarily for the neighborhood?
So I've consulted with Sapphire Risk Management, they are another prominent national security system consultant. They put together a brief overview, I mean, every door in the facility will be key fobbed, there's no access without having a key fob to it. All the individual grow rooms have a key fob, so you can track when everybody, someone's coming and going. Every grow room has cameras in it, so that you can monitor what's happening with the plants. The secure, the exterior of the building is, I think they've got one, two, three, eight cameras on the exterior of the building, and again, it's all cloud-based, that the state police can come in and check it at any time, and they have direct access to it, so it's a very secure, it's a high-level system of, you know, I mean, it's, I don't, it's a high-level security system that's...
No armed security guards or anything like that?
No, no, that's only on the retail basis, because it's retail, it's cash, and you have to have, that's why they have the security guards on the dispensaries, but not on the cultivation site, because that's all, you know, it's still handled ACH between, you know, banks, there's no cash flow going back and forth.
Can you speak a little bit to your experience previously with any type of vandalism, break-ins, anybody giving you a hard time, has that been an experience of yours with your previous cooperation?
No, I grew a thousand plants outdoors, nobody came and took anything, or, my neighbors all knew who, what I was doing, and I had no odor mitigation system set up on that, because it's, you don't really need, like, the cannabis plant under the hemp barn is covered under the right to farm, so you're covered under odor mitigation issues, which is a little crazy, because it's the same plant, but in this program, no, I had no issues, and I never locked it, you know, barns were all open in the greenhouses, I mean, you could walk in anytime.
There'll be no operations whatsoever outside of the building, other than bringing deliveries inside?
Correct.
All right. We talked earlier about the vacant lighted state of the building, and Mr. Gilmore showed the architectural rendering of what you're going to do with the building. Can you just speak to what, you know, how you intend to improve this building?
I, you know, has anybody here gone to school there? So, in the year that I've been applying and doing all this stuff, I ran across a lot of people who were telling me fun stories about the school, and I, that's not lost on me, and it's, you know, I, I do like the fact that it's, it's an old school, and I would like to honor that, and, you know, put a plaque up and commemorate the history of it. So the improvement, so, you have to close in all the windows, that's just according to state regulations, you can't have public viewing of the grow rooms, so in order to not make it look like just a big monstrosity, I came up with the thought of making it look more like, you know, a board and bat and kind of barn look to the building with some faux windows up top, and try to, you know, preserve the building and bring it back to a functioning state, rather than what it's, you know, going to happen to it, it's going to just go away, I mean, it's going to be demolished at some point.
Have you had a, have you had a structural engineer inspect the building?
No, not yet.
I think that would be real advisable, because they're wooden floors, they're not, they're not down on the ground level on concrete, all your growing area is going to be up on the...
Yeah, well, the majority of the weight would be in the water, holding tanks, which are on the ground floor, and the plants aren't, again, they're, they're not, they're not holding a lot of water, they're not, you know, they're in one gallon pots, and it's usually a core-based medium that they're growing in, so they're not hugely, it's not a huge weight brought on that, and it's an old school, it was built very well, I mean, it's, you know, but I would, you know, that would be obviously a part of site plan approval, when we go for that side, we would obviously have a structural engineer come in and look at all that stuff and provide testimony on that.
All right. So you were talking about the vacant state of the building and your plans to improve, and I think what you said was that, you know, the building is likely to be demolished if it's not going to be used at some time soon, is that really right?
That's my...
Yeah, and, I mean, based on your knowledge, your dealings with the current owner, there's been no appetite for other buyers to purchase this building, right?
The building's been actively for sale for four years, it's been on the market, we just went through the strongest, you know, one of the crazy real estate market, I'm also a real estate agent, so I do understand the real estate market firsthand, and the fact that nobody has stepped forth and found a use for this building kind of speaks for itself, so as a near-real estate agent, I'm looking around for others, you know, for a site, and this one just kept popping up on my radar, I looked at it, I walked through it, I was like, wow, this is laid out exactly perfect for what I want to do, this is, I thought it was a win-win. I'm sure there's people here that don't see that as a win-win, but we'll hear from them shortly.
All right, and based on your experience in the industry, are you confident that this property and this building are going to be a good fit and accommodate your proposed operations?
Yes, one hundred percent.
Mr. Axelson, thank you.
Not right now, I'll...
All right. As our third witness, I'd like to call Todd Ruff.
Good evening. My name is Todd Ruff, I am representative for Griffin Greenhouse Supply, I am the Control and Agriculture Rep, I work in New York, New Jersey, Maryland, and Delaware, so my team and I, we work with producers for fruits, veggies, and right now, because of the market, I do a lot of work with cannabis. A lot of the vendors I know will be larger, the large MSOs that you all know the name of, that operate locally in the area, and MSO is a multi-state operator, so I deal with a lot of these larger businesses from, with their locations in New Jersey as well as outside of Jersey. I also work with fruit and veggie producers, veggie producers that are all the way from fully automated systems that use AI, all the way down to local grower, same with cannabis, I work with large, extremely large grows, ten thousand, a hundred thousand square feet, all the way down to people like Mr. Axelson. I have five years in the industry, I've probably been in more cannabis facilities than I would arguably say anybody in this room, very familiar with the processes, very familiar with, with the systems. I do not consider myself a plant expert, but again, am very knowledgeable with the overall operations, systems, things of that nature.
Mr. Ruff, so in your role that you just described with Griffin, you supply agricultural operations in addition to, pardon me, in addition to cannabis users, right?
Correct. I, like I said, our company supplies, we do fertilizer, we do the actual structures, the equipment, sprayers, all of, anything needed for that, for, like I said, for cannabis, but also for other grows.
So you're familiar with the type of equipment and supplies that are required for agricultural operations?
Yes.
The equipment and supplies that Griffin would be supplying to guard state harvest would be the same type of equipment and supplies, the same type of processes that are conducted in any other agricultural operation?
Correct, they'd be tailored for his particular environment, based off of the facility that he's using, but yes, they would be very similar to anything else that would be used in any normal agricultural, agricultural grow.
All right, and through your role at Griffin, are you familiar with the availability and effectiveness of odor mitigation systems?
Yes, it's not just here, everywhere has, usually it's the same issue, it comes up. The, there are multiple options, multiple companies, the one that Mr. Axelson has been talking to, Cannabusters, is one that I am very familiar with, I've worked with them, I have clients that have worked with them, the system does work very, very well, you know, you, there's plenty of information online if you really want to dig into it, but the system does work very well. The actual technology has been in use around, it's, they tailored it to cannabis, but it has been around for other things like transfer stations, trash yards, things like that, other kind of stinky areas, this process and this material and product that they use has been used with them for the past twenty years. And there's other, other things like carbon filter technology, things like that, that, again, as Mr. Axelson goes through the process, as we start to really dig in and get into the design aspect of it, these are all factors that we're going to consider. Griffin is going to be one of the, one of the guiding forces behind his design, we're going to be helping with him, and again, since we do have, Griffin is a nationwide company, we are involved in the design build of cannabis facilities all over the country, and we take all of those, all of basically what we do around the country and all the different regulations that they have, and we basically take that and use best practices to help people like Mr. Axelson design a facility that is the best for him, but also for the community that he's in.
Other than the fact that this is a unique plant that's cut its own regulations, is there anything particularly unique about this cultivation operation as opposed to any other agriculture or cultivation of plants?
I kind of disagree, it's a plant, it's just a plant, take the politics and everything away from it, it's just a plant, it needs all the same thing as everything else, it needs light, it needs, it needs soil, and it needs some fertilizer, that's, without getting too crazy about everything, it really is just a plant, and that's what we're going to be providing him, so he can grow it.
How many have you dealt with in a school?
Actually, school, none, I do work with one in a converted church, I don't know if that counts.
Church has a high seal.
Very high seal, that was, that was why they bought it. If I may, so, if I may indulge you for just a moment, I came from outside the industry, I've been in this industry for five years, no work background whatsoever, it was a big leap coming in to deal with this into the industry, and especially with cannabis. I had no idea what I was going to be dealing with, I wasn't sure if I was going to be dealing with a Cheech and Chong situation, that's kind of what I had in my head, to be honest with you. My, a year in, I realized I couldn't be more wrong. The people that I work with, the growers, the, you know, they're just regular people, they're, they're often very, very smart, it is not the gray market, it is not the black market, these people spend a lot of time, a lot of money doing things the right way, and they are all very much so on the up and up. I'm actually very proud to be part of this industry, and the people that I've worked with over the past five years have all been really top-notch. You don't go into this industry looking to cut corners, because if you do, you're going to get caught, and there's nothing, there's no reason for somebody like Mr. Axelson to try and do that, to take, to put a step out of line, and lose all the money, and he has put up a lot of money, and he's going to put up a whole lot more, and he's going to lose all of that, so there's nothing beneficial for him to try and do anything below board. And like I said, the people that I've been working with in the industry across all the states have been phenomenal, it is not a, this is not, this is not the criminal industry, all right, and he is doing everything that he can to play by the rules and do all the best practices for his benefit and for yours, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, as our last witness, I'd like to call our planner, Tiki Larsi.
I'm going to need to lower this thing, although I have five kids and scream really loud, I don't want to do that.
The screaming part ain't bad, go ahead.
Good evening. So I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners with a Master's of City Planning from the University of Pennsylvania, been practicing in the planning profession for over twenty years throughout New Jersey, representing municipalities as well as applicants before boards, currently represent Univista Township, Morris River Township, Woodbury Heights, and other municipalities throughout New Jersey, as well as carrying plans for them and ordinances and master plans for them, and also carrying before boards, and I'm sure you've seen me before your board as well in the past.
Okay, you're good.
Thank you. Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, so instead of doing the Q and A, because we all know I'm going to just explain everything, and fighting over the microphone, and then hopefully everyone can hear me, I'm going to talk about the use variants...
Yeah.
Okay, so instead of doing the Q and A, because we all know I'm going to just explain everything and fighting over the microphone, and then hopefully everyone can hear me, I'm going to talk about the use variance criteria. So we're here because we require a use variance, because this is the RA zone, which is not the residential agricultural zone, which does not permit cannabis cultivation facilities or growth facilities. The property is a unique property and meets many criteria under the municipal land use law in terms of why it is particularly suited for the proposed use. Under particular suitability and the positive criteria analysis, what we have to demonstrate and discuss with the board and show to the board is that there are unique factors associated with the property and the use that create a good marriage on this property for what we are proposing. And I believe that exists here on many factors. We also have to understand and start off in this process talking about the elephant in the room of sorts, right? Cannabis is something some people completely understand, understand the need for, and are in favor and advocate for. Cannabis also causes a lot of misunderstanding and confusion and fear if you're not familiar with the industry and what the regulations are and how the industry operates. So I hope to help answer, if we haven't answered, some of the things that may address some fears and explain what the need is for this type of facility. New Jersey has adopted various regulations. Initially, we adopted regulations for medical marijuana facilities. And then after that, we adopted the recreational facilities. This facility to grow cannabis doesn't mean it's necessarily going to be sold just for recreational use. This can be sold for medical use. Just because you go to a recreational distribution facility doesn't mean you're using it for recreational purposes either. My sister, she's 51 years old, and she has scleroderma and lupus. And she needs to have access to cannabis to help her with her symptoms. She doesn't, she has a medical card, but she also takes advantage of the recreational facilities because it's easier to get to. And it helps her live her life. And if you know what scleroderma is, it's when you turn into a statue, you have bone spurs come out of your hands. People use cannabis to help sleep, to help with anxiety, to help with symptoms after chemotherapy. It is a positive aspect of what we can use in our daily lives to help with conditions. We, as a state, have decided that it is appropriate to allow both medical and recreational. The township of Franklin felt that it was important enough to address, and when they adopt, you adopted an ordinance in 2021, '06, '21, and you felt that it was inappropriate at that point in time to have any distribution or facilities where you could go purchase cannabis and no delivery facilities. But you did say it was okay to have the cultivation, the manufacturing, and the processing. And what we're proposing here is to grow in a micro facility, in a contained environment, cannabis plants in accordance with all of the state regulations. Now, this site, and what makes it particularly suited and what is unique to this site, is the existing features of the property, the existing building on this property. And I've represented cannabis cultivators, I've represented the retail components, and I've also worked with municipalities in writing ordinances. I've worked with an application to have a cultivation, a grow facility in the center of Atlantic City in an old building that they are retrofitting. That is very similar to what we're proposing here, aside from it being in the city versus in the township of Franklin. But what we're doing is taking an old building, adaptively repurposing it, bringing it back into production to provide a benefit to the community in terms of not having a rundown building where people are hanging out, putting graffiti throughout the building. It's, it's not in a good shape and good condition. And so here we have a building that allows us to provide for a controlled grow facility. And controlled grow in an indoor environment provides a much better alternative to a large outdoor grow facility in this type of location. The controlled grow allows for controls on humidity, it allows for controls on pests, it allows you to reuse and repurpose the water, it allows for you to have appropriate security, and it doesn't change what the area looks like. There are improvements made to the building. The building looks as it has in many respects for over, what, I think 1920, 1900, the school was built, at least 1920. So it puts this back onto the tax rolls and makes it a productive property, although it was really never on the tax rolls as a school facility. In terms of the municipality and the ordinances that you have, you have permitted a grow facility, you have one on Lake Road. And that's an outdoor indoor greenhouse-type facility. It's a much larger facility. It is not the same in comparison to what we're proposing here in this controlled environment within this existing building. Under the municipal land use law, in terms of the particular suitability, we have to show that there are unique aspects of the use of the site. And when we listen to the testimony of how this site operates or is proposed to operate, and how this property currently exists, there are several unique features to consider. The first is that adaptive reuse of this existing building. We're not going to have to make any improvements to this property. We're not adding an outdoor greenhouse, we're not putting any additional buildings up. All we are doing is restoring the existing parking area, improving the building, and the only added improvement to the property is a stormwater management basin. And that's to meet stormwater management requirements that didn't exist back in 1920 when this property was originally built. So the improvements that are needed are very minimal on this property, making it uniquely fitted for the use, or uniquely suited for the use. The property is not located on an internal, within a residential cul-de-sac-type community. It's on one of your main, it, there is residential in the area. It is not in a neighborhood that is a cul-de-sac community where you have a dense population of housing around this property.
Let her finish, please.
I didn't say it wasn't a residential area. I said it is not in a cul-de-sac-type residential community where you have houses one right after the other. All right.
Yo, quiet. Go on.
The property, yes, is in a residential agricultural zone. There is a house across the street. There are homes around the area. But directly adjacent to this property, it's a 4.45 acre lot. It is an oversized lot that could be subdivided into residential properties. It has the ability to not be within a local internal neighborhood street. It's on a, made more of a, more of a main road, not a minor residential road, which is important. But it's also important to note that this applicant, this property will not have the amount of employees that you would have had with a school. It will not have the amount of traffic that you would have had with a school. You have one to two deliveries a week, one trash pickup a week, and you have 10 employees on shifts. So it's less impactful than any of the other uses that could occur in this property, on this, in this building. Now, the ordinance in this zone doesn't say that you can't use this structure. It does permit a variety of uses. It's just that those uses are not going to be able to accommodate this building because of the improvements that are necessary. There's an investment that needs to go into this property, including improving the septic, bringing the utilities back to the property. Your ordinance allows single-family, it allows agricultural, it allows municipal buildings, police stations, libraries, fire, EMS, schools, and other similar uses. It also has conditional uses such as churches, hospitals, convalescent homes, club or lodge. All of these uses are appropriate in a residential area. This is a former school. It was appropriate in this location as a school. But if it is repurposed as a school, or as a church, or as a club or lodge, or as a municipal building that provides some type of library or community service space, you're going to have more impact on this property in terms of traffic and changes than what you will from what is proposed with this application. And you have a significant investment that's required in order to make this property and this building functional that cannot occur from nonprofit-type uses. And so that adds to the appropriateness of this location. Additionally, the lot is 4.45 acres. We are only utilizing 25% of that property. 75% of this property is wooded and will remain undeveloped. We're not changing the property. We're only reutilizing the building for a use that is permitted to occur in the state of New Jersey, and we believe is appropriate on this site. The site and the use are particularly suited to one another because of the unique characteristics of the use and the demands of the use and the needs of the use, as well as the existing conditions of the property and the ability to reuse that building. The municipal land use law has several purposes of zoning, which are advanced. That includes to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. When a site and a use are considered particularly suitable to one another, they promote the general welfare. I also believe the adaptive reuse of a building, bringing it back into production with a use that provides a product that is beneficial to the residents of the community and the state adds to that promotion of the general welfare. I believe this site promotes the purpose of zoning to, for development that provides sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, both public and private, according to the respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. This site, while it is not an industrial zone, which is what your, the state defers to in terms of where cultivation should be, this site has an existing structure. This is a micro facility. It is not a new warehouse building. It is not a new clearing of the lot for, for greenhouses. We're not saying we're farming outside, we're growing indoors. We're indoor cultivation. This site and this use, this provides sufficient space for this to occur in a manner that is not going to interfere with the existing development patterns and neighborhood. The site promotes the purpose of zoning to provide adequate light air and open space. The building is already existing, and we recognize that we don't meet the setback requirement for the existing setback to Stanton Avenue, which is 22 feet. But we do have considerable setbacks. We have 88 feet to the, I don't have the north arrow, but to the right of the building. Going back down Sheridan, you have over 540 feet. And going out toward Sheridan, you have over 76 feet to the building. 75% of this property will not be developed. 25%, the area where the building is, re-improving the parking lot and the stormwater management area is all that's going to be left, that's going to be utilized. The forested areas that are out in this area, surrounding this corner of this intersection, are not going to change by virtue of this application. I also believe we promote the purpose of zoning to encourage the coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. When you have a property that has improvements and you can repurpose that, and you can reutilize it and provide investment back into the community, that results in what I believe is the more efficient use of land. Alternatively, to take this property and turn it into several residential lots and lose all of the vegetated area would have a different impact. Maybe not one that would bother some people, but losing the vegetation and having existing new homes put up could have a change to the character of this intersection within the community. And lastly, I believe we promote the purpose of zoning to provide and promote a desired visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Again, creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement, that desired visual environment. This building is going to continue to look as it has with improvements. You're not going to have visible windows, but you're going to have a building that looks like it has. It's not a substantial change. We have the vivid here. So it's not going to have the overgrown vegetation. It's not going to have the graffiti. It's not going to have all of the negatives that are there. The creative development techniques to repurpose a building for something that contributes back to the community in terms of the use that is proposed is a benefit and promotes that purpose of zoning. In terms of the positive criteria, I believe there are a lot of benefits afforded this application in terms of what it can do, what it means to the community, what it means to New Jersey, and what it means in terms of the use that is proposed and the benefits it can afford. In terms of the negative criteria, this is where we want to talk about what is the unknown and the fear that goes along with cannabis. And it is a fear, and you hear it in the community behind me. This is such a highly regulated business and industry. There are requirements, so that there are security cameras around this entire property. There are requirements in terms of the way you grow the plant. Every part of that plant has to be accounted for by weight, so they know that it hasn't been misappropriated. Everything has checks and balances with the state, including how you take care of trash removal. So there is no room here for any potential security problems or negative issues in the community. The biggest concern that comes from cannabis cultivation is the odor mitigation. And the industry has come so far that that can be controlled and regulated. They're controlling it in cities where the buildings are next to other buildings, and they're not having problems with the odor. When you have an outdoor grow facility, it's harder to control odor because you're not in a controlled environment. This building, having a controlled environment, can have an appropriate odor mitigation system with the scrubbers and buffers and all the things that they need to ensure that there's no negative impact from the odor. In terms of negative impacts as they relate to the negative criteria and whether there's a substantial detriment to the public good, the odor mitigation should not be one of those because of the industry requirements. If this use is approved and we are back for site plan, we will provide full information on all odor mitigation measures. But I can assure you that it's not going to be an issue. If it's not an issue in a city environment, it's not going to impact in a closed environment out there as well. The material, the industry has come a very long way. Concerns about security. There are no people going in and out. The area, the back of the property is fenced, the entrance is secure. The only people allowed in the building are the employees and/or state regulators that might be doing inspections. You have to have appropriate clearance to enter the building. There will be cameras, and you have a security plan, and that will be reviewed by any department in the township that you would want it to be reviewed by, as well as meeting the stringent state standards for security with cameras at every entrance and outside and appropriate lighting in the rear of the building for security purposes. Our hours of operation are from seven to six, five days a week and a half day on Saturdays are what we're proposing. We're proposing 10 employees, which creates no real substantial change or impact in terms of traffic patterns. So in terms of the substantial detriment to the public good, short of cannabis is against my morals and I don't like it and trust it, the regulations that are in effect really control those impacts on this property such that they do not create a substantial detriment to the public good. In fact, less of an impact than if this were converted to a full school again, or a church, or some other type of use that's permitted. In terms of the last prong is the substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance and master plan. This property is a unique property, it's an anomaly. You don't have properties throughout your RA zone that are like this property where you have an old school on a large lot that has not been utilized and can be repurposed. And that's important, because when we look at what we're doing here, and we look at the zoning ordinance, and we look at the standards in your master plan, which was just re-approved last month, we have to show why this advances the purposes of your ordinance and your master plan and why it makes sense on this property. When you look at the RA zone, there are many purposes included in the rest of, in that zone. The purposes in that zone include to conserve and preserve environmentally sensitive lands, including but not limited to areas such as woodland consisting of mature stands of forest, steep slopes, floodplains, et cetera. 75% of this property will remain undeveloped. And that's not an open field, it's a wooded area of the property. 4.45 acres. 75% of that is going to remain undeveloped. The purposes also include conservation and maintenance of open land, and that's what this application does. It allows for this property to remain as it has with the structure on it in its state that it's been in, with limited improvements on the property. Your master plan, which was recently just amended- Your master plan, which was recently just amended and I've reviewed, continues to advance many of the similar goals and objectives that existed in your 2013 master plan. Goals that include protecting the rural quality and quality of the life in Franklin Township and the objectives underneath that encouraging growth and development in clusters rather than sprawling developments and in those areas near existing infrastructure in order to minimize impacts to a loss of open space farmland and forested areas, to require landscape buffering to minimize noise, visual, and other impacts of non-residential development on residential uses. That first goal of the master plan, we're not changing anything on this property. We're repurposing an existing structure and having limited improvements and preserving seventy-five percent of that property from being developed. This goes towards advancing that purpose in your master plan. This is not a new building. This is not a new build. This is not adding additional structures. The goals in the master plan were revised to also state to promote orderly growth and development consistent with state and regional plans and consistent with the township master plan elements. The state of New Jersey believes that cannabis cultivation and cannabis operations are appropriate. This may not be an industrial zone, which is where the default is, but the ordinances or the regulations for the state don't say you can't have cultivation outside of industrial areas. So this meets the state requirements in terms of where is it appropriate? Has this happened? Has it happened in other locations? And yes, cultivation outside in other zones is appropriate and this repurposing of this building advances that purpose in your master plan. And lastly, maintain a, well, not lastly, maintain a safe and attractive residential environment for current and future residents to enjoy. They may not agree, but the security that's going to go into this facility based on state regulations is so comprehensive that this will in fact be a safe environment, better than having people partying or hanging out inside a vacant building that's already in the neighborhood and not contributing to the community. To continue to seek diversity and expand your economy, to provide for flexibility to allow for innovative techniques or alternative methods in agricultural production as technologies evolve in order to support the agricultural industries. I don't know how this can't fall any closer to that goal and objective in the master plan. Cannabis plants, medical or these plants, the cannabis product and the cultivation, an indoor environment, an indoor grow facility is advancement of agricultural technology. We have facilities throughout the country where they are creating indoor grow facilities because it has a better controlled environment for humidity. You can produce year round and you don't have to contend with pesticide. I will note in your master plan, and I would be remiss if I didn't because someone will tell me if I don't, there was a recommendation in the master plan specific to the cannabis requirement and to encourage cannabis in and permit cannabis cultivation, the classes one through four, in your industrial zones. This is not an industrial zone, but as I stated, it's an anomaly of a property. It is a unique property that works for this use because of the two factors, the existing structure and how it can be contained and controlled and provide a reuse of this building. This is not something you would find in many other locations. It is unique to this property at this location. And because of that, I believe this would advance what is intended in your master plan and would advance the purposes and goals of your master plan without causing any substantial impairment. Again, I believe there are substantial benefits afforded this application. I believe this is site and the use clearly particularly suited to one another. I believe there's fear associated with some of these uses and not everyone understands it, but I think when you look at the basic premise, reusing of property and putting it back onto the productive roles with something that is this highly regulated ensures that there's no negative impact to the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Okay. Our township engineer wrote a report. Do you want to?
Thank you, Chairman, board members. We did a report dated April 15, 2024, and this report is basically what the applicant and the applicant's professionals have been talking to each one of those points. I'd just like to quickly summarize a couple of things in there. So this is in fact the resident agriculture zone. Residents in agriculture are permitted. In New Jersey, cannabis is not agriculture per se. So it doesn't meet the permitted uses in the zone. Furthermore, our ordinance 6-2021 says cannabis cultivation and manufacturing and processing is only permitted in industrial zone. Therefore, and like they said, they are here for that D variance. That D variance can only be granted by this board. Mrs. Morris, you went over the positive and negative criteria in support of that D variance review. One of the things I really wanted to hear from the application tonight was what was going to happen with the rest of the land. We heard it very clearly that the remainder of that property is going to stay in its wooded state the way it is now. If you look at the rendering, that's the dark green color, that's going to stay wooded as part of this application. So again, this is only for a use variance. It's a bifurcated application. If it's approved, they will need to come back to this board for formal site plan approval. That's where we'll get into the meat, the meat potatoes of the engineering portion of it, drainage and parking and stormwater management, landscaping, things along those lines. So that's really not on the table tonight. It's just the use. I wanted to hear operational details. I think the applicant did a good job explaining to us how this school is going to be reused for this proposed operation. Other items in my report, hours of operation, number of employees, deliveries, and site lighting, has all been testified to tonight at a high level. And again, we'll get to all of that more in the site plan. In Franklin Township, we have a section of our ordinance 253-96 labeled prohibited uses. And items of concern are security, noise, light, groundwater pollution, and odor mitigation. And that's a lot what we heard tonight. They touched on each one of their points, how they think that their operation doesn't fall under this prohibited uses category. One thing, the security plan, when you read it, it talks about a safe for currency storage. I thought I heard testimony tonight that there's really not going to be any cash on site. Maybe we can have some testimony. Maybe you can tell me that's not supposed to be in the security report, but I picked that up and I just wanted the board to be familiar with that. Also, if this gets approved, this use variance gets approved, the security plan should be subject to approval by our local police department also. Any conditions of approval should be subject to all these lots being consolidated so it stays as one parcel and doesn't become other uses. And that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want to open it up? I make the motion. We open it public.
Second.
Okay. Who wants to be heard? Who's the first victim? Does her time lie? Come on up.
I guess she's.
Part? Yeah, come up front. Come up here. You have to come up. No, 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 that ain't gonna work. That's not gonna work. She has to, she has to record it for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am not for.
We need your. Your name and address.
An address.
214 Cherry Tree Court, Franklin.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, oh, dear God.
Sir, help me.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just saying that I'm not for or against this. I came for information this evening, that's all. Now, there's two questions I have. One, I heard there was asbestos in the building. Is that true or is that a rumor? And two, if I were one of the residents nearby, I would want to absolutely know that I was not going to be affected by lights at night for security, by any of the fumes or whatever. Now, that was entertained. I heard that. But if you have, if you have a mechanical hood that sucks up the vapors from the extraction process, those vapors are automatically screened with the carbon, carbon filters or something or other.
That's what they testified to.
Okay, I'm just wondering if maybe a couple of board members could go to this place on, what is it, Lake Road or something? Check it out for yourself and see, are there any odors there or are there not? That way, we would know for sure. So that's, that's my concern, the effect of those that live immediately nearby as far as lights or odors and the daycare. And that's it. The idea of renovating the property looked wonderful, so that part is a problem. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up. Let's make a deal. Name and address, please.
Sherry Neimester, S H A R R Y, N E I, N E I, S T E R. Three, three places, so in New Jersey. Thank you.
Okay, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I am the director of the nursery school that is directly across from the proposed site. We have over 123 children in the school at this time. I have worked in this township for 43 years and even though I don't live in this township, I consider the people in the township my family and I take it very seriously. We are nonprofit. We give to the community, but if this is allowed to go forward, we will never be able to take the children outside to play. Parents will not want their children to come to a daycare across from a processing plant. And we are one of two daycares in the township and it would be a shame for us to close. His business will close this business. And even though you talk about inequality and all that, if you ever go off 42 and go to Greenleaf and smell that three, four blocks away from that facility, and I talked to the gentleman here and he said, well, they can find me and this and that, well, that's all well and good, but my children, my over 100 children will not be able to go outside. So I would think that it is not appropriate in that area for this daycare to have that across the street from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Jones, 1605 Autumn Drive.
Okay, swear to tell the truth, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Got to call the U.S. on a couple of things here. Number one, everybody knows that that's going to be a weed point or weed place, okay? And also the smell. As a 32-year police officer, okay, I have dealt with many hundreds of weed groups, the ones in the houses, through flares and everything, okay? You are not going to get that smell over. And that is right in my backyard, okay? So everybody knows that cannabis is still Schedule I class drug, okay? So the DEA actually still prosecutes for that. Just keep that in mind because of the presidential stuff going on right now, you don't know what's going to happen with that, okay? So can I ask you guys a couple of questions? What kind of?
Hold it, just use the mic though. You gotta use the mic.
What kind of hazardous materials are there? CO2 bottles, antihistamine, is it? No, I don't have to know this. CO2 potentially, ethanol.
Potentially, yeah.
No. CO2. How much and where are the tanks and things like that?
I haven't gone through site plan. One of that's written in stone because if you want to do experiments, you're not going to report it to the site plan, so I don't have answers and all that. It'll all be applied to the site plan.
Sir, he's got to, they gotta come back if it gets approved.
It's not gonna work to do it this way.
No, yeah. We'd have to have you come up.
Well, no, if you have questions, you raise them and afterward they'll be able to address it. No, you can use that a little more time.
No, I don't need any more time. I'm just, you know, I really wanted to answer questions, you know, with, you know, how much are they, because it affects me because I have a tank of CO2 or anything else that's in my backyard, okay? So I would like to have that information.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Andrew Garnier, 1622 Stanton Avenue.
Swear to tell the truth?
I do, so swear.
Thank you.
I live approximately half an hour or half a mile from where this planned development is going to be going in, about halfway between Sheridan and Coles Mill. My kids have attended JPS since they were old enough to, approximately two years. I have a five-year-old and a seven-year-old both in Janvier Elementary School now. I have a statement and then some questions. To be clear, this is a variance for approval to grow recreational weed. There's been a lot of flowery language about medical marijuana and extracted oils, but they have deliberately sidestepped, bluntly saving they are selling their $3,000 per pound flowers for recreational purposes and using this building because it is significantly below market value for the acreage and square footage. There are reason there here seeking a variance from the industrial zoning assumption for cultivation, which is meant to keep businesses like this out of neighborhoods. By my understanding, criteria for a variance also requires no substantial detrimental effect to the community, which to be clear and speak to the planner's point, Franklin zoning requires one acre in Franklinville Township. District approved, that JPS school, Janvier Presbyterian Preschool, is a district-approved pickup and drop-off point for after and before stay at that location. There are at least three bus routes that I know of that have a school bus stop in that parking lot, 200 feet from where they're planning to put this building and that's those security cameras. Has that been addressed at all in this and what's going to happen with those bus routes? Because I know seal bus, dolphin bus, and fish bus all pick up there for Janvier School. And that is just speaking for kindergarten through second grade. Teacher Sherry has addressed how many kids go to that school and that has been in operation for 43 years. A lot of fully grown adults in this township went to preschool in that building. And if this goes through, that will cause significant detrimental effect to this community and to that business, which has been a fixture of Franklinville for 40-plus years. I also have some questions. So they talked about the stringent security standard. How do they plan to meet those stringent security standards of fences and no windows and all these security cameras while remaining a nondescript building in a residential farm community where the average acreage is probably two plus acres per house? They can't. It is going to look like Fort Knox and everyone is going to know what's there because of this. They talked about closed loop air filtration experience with six weeks out of 10 that those flowers are going to be flowering.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Dave Marshall, 67 New Roman Alley. Good evening, Christina.
How are you?
You swear to tell the truth?
I do. As I've stated before, you've seen me multiple different meetings. My family's been in this township since the late 1800s. The last thing we need is this town going to die. You can't continue down that path. It's steadily degrading and this unfortunately will not help us in any way, shape, or form. A couple of things that were called out, one about the master plan, it is not approved yet. The preliminary approval was done through the planning board. Had some changes that had to be revised and then it's one of the township's things, so it hasn't been approved. One of the changes they did talk about though is they want to bring this and put marijuana only or pat this group in, only in the industrial commercial zone, they want to make that specific. It states it already, they just want to reinforce it. So but again, take it away from this zone. Everybody from what I've been seeing even through other towns, I've attended other meetings in other areas, there's a cash cow going, everybody's trying to jump on board with the big money. Colorado started this years ago. Because of that and what's going on now with the actual decline of these sales, Colorado was losing one out of four cannabis facilities every week. They're going into a blighted building and the tax returned and the. They're going into a blighted building, and the tax return that the township is getting, the facility is getting, is declining rapidly. The builders, giving up the buildings. There's not enough demand outlet to support all of the businesses that are actually growing, and the different states are all that. So, we're going to be no different, we have enough of those empty buildings in this town now. Uh, the water concern, we were talking about the capture in the water. The average cannabis plant requires 5.8 gallons a day of water. Now, not all of that would go into the wastewater cycle, a lot of it would be absorbed, but even that being said, at a thousand plants, that's when they exceed their water capacity in their tank, every single day. So that would have to have that truck coming in every day to pump it out. Every day. Another truck running up and down our roads, pumping out water, and I don't know how that could sustain it, that's what they say at a thousand plants. That's just basic math. Something that hasn't been brought up, and Dana, you may be able to reinforce me on this, but something I've been done doing some research lately on is the fire hazard in these little facilities. Cannabis burns at a rate of six times hotter than any other type of building fire next to a current electric system. Most fires, when you actually start researching this, have multiple injuries to firefighters because of the fuels, the heat, and what goes on, and that's with city water. We don't have that. The most recent one was in California, it was a building very similar size to this, it was a thirty-two hundred square foot facility, took a hundred and fifty firefighters with city water to actually, just to contain it, took six hours and had eighteen injuries to those firefighters, because of the heat damage. Something our town does not have the capability of handling. It can't. We need the thing smarter and better to improve this community. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Chris Sayers, one eighty-four Malala Lake Boulevard. Swear to tell the truth? Yes, I do. Thank you. Uh, so this past spring, I had the privilege to talk to, gosh, hundreds of residents, just knocking on doors and talking to them, and actually, you know, I asked their opinions about cannabis in Franklin Township, and I had a very stated position on my opinion of how I called it on cannabis. Do you know what? Most of the residents in Franklin Township were mixed when it came to the legalization of recreational cannabis. However, there was not one resident that I talked to that was supportive of the idea that they should have one of these facilities in their neighborhood, or next to their homes. Not one. I could not find one. And again, a lot of these people were supportive of the policy of recreational marijuana, but they were not supportive of having these facilities in neighborhoods where they live and work, and their children could play. Um, secondly, uh, just speaking from the legal aspect of this, so under the Federal Controlled Substances Act, distributing, possessing with intent to distribute, or manufacturing of a controlled substance in, or on, or within one thousand feet of real property comprising a public or private elementary, vocational, or secondary school, or a private or public college, junior college, university, or playground, remains a federal criminal offense. So regardless, so I went on Google Maps, I didn't have the ability to just get a tape measure up, I went on Google Maps, and I measured the distance, according to Google, of the daycare center to the distance to the school. It's less than two hundred and fifty feet.
Wow.
Two hundred and fifty feet. And there's a playground there, it's a prepaid daycare, and it remains a federal crime to manufacture these products within that distance. I don't know what exactly, did you have to swear an oath in order to be on this board? Because I know, I know elected officials have to swear an oath to both the United States Constitution and the New Jersey Constitution. And I, I, I won't begin to, uh, you know, obviously there's a disconnect there, um, but just know your authority and, and just make sure that you, uh, respect both documents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, you here? Yeah.
Jason Brandt, six eighty-eight Rosemont Avenue, Newfield, New Jersey.
Okay, swear to tell the truth, Jason.
I do.
Okay.
Um, I have two portions of my comments this evening. Uh, the first comments are coming from me as the president of the Franklin Township School Board, uh, as I've been directed by my board to come here and represent them in relationship to this application this evening. As you're all aware, uh, Franklin Township School District operates a K-through-second, uh, school, uh, Janvier School, which is in, uh, close proximity to this site. Uh, in addition, uh, we do operate our, um, administrative office facilities for the district on the same Janvier property, which is in close proximity, uh, to this site. Um, the board is opposed to this application. Um, the board does not feel as though it's an appropriate use, uh, in the zone, and, um, would strenuously object to any approval that would grant, um, such an application, um, as before the board this evening. Um, with that, I'm going to move on. That was my pitch as representative of the school board.
Yeah.
My comments from here forward are my personal opinions and personal comments. Um, I just wanted to address a couple of things that the, the planning official, uh, Mrs. Morrissey, uh, said, um, actually things that she didn't say, uh, more appropriately. Um, the first thing is that the township never passed an ordinance, um, approving or encouraging cannabis facilities within the township outside the bounds of the industrial districts, as Mr. Schottie pointed out in his testimony. Um, the second thing is, again, as Mr. Schottie pointed out, and you hear me say this repetitively in these applications, is that, um, as much as these applicants try to tie these applications to an agricultural use, cannabis is not recognized as agricultural use under the municipal name used law. The next comment is, um, regarding, uh, the master plan reexamination. Um, again, that, that document has not been adopted, uh, however, uh, Mrs. Morrissey brought it up, so there's a couple of aspects of that. Those recommendations, which were conspicuously left out of her testimony, um, there as filed as, there was a recommendation, um, by the committee to the planning board to specifically prohibit cannabis uses in all areas of the township outside of the industrial zens. Additionally, there was another recommendation to prohibit any cannabis uses within a thousand feet of a school irrespective of whether or not they're in an industrial zen. So that's over and above the, the recommendation to prohibit in the, in the other zens. So, at this point, I'd like to cross-examine, Mrs. Morrissey, on another comment that she made.
Uh, your time is up, Jason.
Mr. Inglis, is, if this is approved, it will be appealed? Can I have an opportunity to cross-examine one of the professionals?
You can ask her, ask her one question, please.
Sure. You, you put into the record, you're familiar with the NIDC standard, obviously.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You put into the record, um, relative to the NIDC standard, that this property is so uniquely suited for this use that there is no other properties in the township that would come even closer to the uniqueness of this property, because it's a hundred-year-old school on a four-and-a-half-acre acreage site. Is that your testimony?
That it is uniquely suited because it's an anomaly, that there are not many properties that would have similar features with an old school on four-point-four-five acres of land located in, in, in an area that would be appropriate.
An anomaly being that there are no other schools on four-and-a-half-acre lots in Franklin Township?
Abandoned schools for over twenty years on four-and-a-half-acre lots. I don't know exactly, there might be one, but this is one, that would be another anomaly then.
Well, there is, well, an anomaly is something that exists as an anomaly. There's another school on a large lot that's been abandoned, it was recently sold, so there's nothing about this property that makes it uniquely suited for this purpose. You, your testimony is that this property is uniquely suited because it has an old abandoned building on it. I mean, by that standard, half of Franklin Township would be particularly well-suited for...
Thank you, Jen. So, it's not just because it has the abandoned building. My testimony had additional factors that went into it, that related to the specific use that was proposed, and how it fit into the building, and the controls, and the state regulations that went along with that, so it was more than just the fact that it's an abandoned building on the property.
Okay, that's it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else want to be heard?
Make a motion to close the public portion. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I just was waiting, that's all I have to do. My name's Lori Goldsmith. And I do swear to tell the truth.
What's your address?
Your address?
Uh, two oh six Cherry Tree Court.
Thank you.
Okay, now you can do the hand swear. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, uh, I live on two oh six Cherry Tree Court, which is the development with forty-two homes, right across the street, basically. The backyard of some of our people, it would be able to see the cannabis place, the school that's there now. So we are in a very residential area, and we have Autumn Drive on the other side. Yep, so, we're all there, and I believe we all would be against it. Nobody in, that I know of, bought a house for three, four, up to seven-hundred thousand dollars, and then put improvements in it to be in a neighborhood with a cannabis farm. So, that's my thing. And I think, if it's not already zoned for it, why do it? It's across the street from the school, in a residential area. And that's it.
That's good, thank you. Okay. Make a motion to close the public portion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alice Mulley, seventeen seventy-seven Dutch Mill Road, Franklinville.
Okay. Swear to tell the truth here?
Certainly do.
Thank you.
I, um, did some reading on the New Jersey Code for applicants who cultivate microbusiness, and NJAC seventeen thirty-six, two-seven, and the last portion of it says, "In these fifty-one percent of the number of total persons included in a microbusiness license application or license holder, including all owners, principals and employees shall be residents of either the municipality in which the microbusiness is business, or it will be located, or a municipality directly pouring such municipality at the time of the application." So, I don't believe this act that lives in our municipality actually lives in that night. And there may be a, uh, my legs are shaking, sorry, uh, discrepancy between cannabis and hemp. As far as I could find out, he has a hemp farm, not a cannabis farm. Now, that might be just, you know, a different interpretation of what cannabis is, but, uh, on his site, he sells smokable hemp. It's all sold out right now, but it is there. But as far as, uh, there's so many other places in the township, or in New Jersey, that would be better suited for this. My thing, humble.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have to get this through.
Hello, Tom Simmons, two oh five Cherry Tree Court.
Raise your right hand, please.
Yes, sir.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes. Um, so, my major concern, so I live very close as well, I'm a friend of, or a neighbor of Lori's neighbor, um, and don't live very far. Uh, we've heard a lot of, you know, reaction from the community that lives close by and in the township, that, you know, many of us are not in favor, are not in favor of this. Let me go back where it's true. Um, the owner spoke on the odor, uh, regarding when the flowers smell, and how often, et cetera. Um, it went through the amount of weeks, et cetera, et cetera, per classroom. And then there was also, uh, testimony regarding no substantial detriment to the community, I believe that was a specific, uh, comment from the owner, um, regarding state. I believe Ms. Morrissey, uh, spoke of no substantial impact to the community. Mr. Rupp said that, uh, something echoed similar comments, and he's been in many, many buildings, et cetera. The only thing is that, what I see is that most of them, they don't live in this community, uh, they don't live in this neighborhood, and aren't going to have to face the impact of, when there is the impact of the odor in the community. They spoke on this Cannabuster odor mitigation system that is so terrific, but even just a quick Google search, and odor seems to be one of the major issues that anybody that lives close to a facility has. So if they're so great, why is there still such a problem? Um, and I would just say, I guess, you know, I would just say it's not in, uh, the industrial zone, it's an agro, residential agricultural zone, um, and, and I would say, so, you know, obviously, in my opinion, don't approve it. Ms. Morrissey kept using the word "unique to this site," "unique to this site," um, and I would say that a hundred and twenty-three students at a, a daycare, uh, facility, I would call that pretty unique to this site, as well as probably, I don't know, a hundred homes within a half a mile as the, as a crow flies. So, um, I would just say not my backyard, I'm just not in favor of it. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Name an address, please.
Mike Miller, one nineteen Peachtree Drive.
Swear to tell the truth on your, what you got to say?
He stated multiple times that it was four to six weeks of flowering time, and that's the time that the plant generally has an odor. He has four classrooms, so that's twenty-four weeks a year that my house has to deal with this smell, which is less than a mile from his place. Has there been any health studies on what it also does? It may not smell, but how does it impact my health? Forever, since you, all of you were this big, you were told weed is bad for you, weed is bad for you. All of a sudden, taxpayers, I mean, boards and, and places are like, "Oh, we can get money for this weed that we've been told that was illegal since we were this big." My, all my kids went to that preschool. Guess where they wouldn't have went? If there was a place across the street growing weed. They wouldn't have went there. I have three kids in this district. Six or seven kids in my street go there. That preschool walks down my street every single day during the summer. Sherry takes them out all the time. I wave to them. Guess what? If it stinks outside, they're not going outside. But the truth of the matter is, the building's not going to be there anymore. They're going to have to close down that preschool, because it has twenty-four weeks. Go put it in industrial zone. They want this building here because it's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Wait till he sees the cost in repairing this place. He hasn't had a structural engineer in this place yet? Good luck. It's a hundred years old. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public portion.
Second. No favor?
All right.
Okay, uh, it'd be an opportunity for a closing, huh? Oh, yes. A rebuttal on your part, counselor? Address some of the questions of the neighbors?
Yeah, so I did have some opposing comments I will ask, I'm sure I'll have to address as time, there were a couple of questions directly to him. So there was a question regarding hazardous substances.
Are you speaking to the mic?
There was a question regarding hazardous substances at the, uh, for the...
Still can't hear you.
Can you please speak to that?
As far as hazardous substances go at the site, um, looking at ethanol extraction, which is, um, it's a flammable.
Of course it is.
But, it's no different than, um, that would probably be, and then again, that's in the extraction process that, uh, John Monavich and I are going over, and then we're not even set on, that's necessarily going to be used. If, you know, if there's an issue, we're not committing to saying, "Well, we have to have ethanol." It's not, um, it's definitely not on the table to remove it, as far as the processing. There are other managed, there are solventless, there's a nice water bath, uh, technique to remove the, um, oil from the plants, that also works as well, just maybe not as efficient as the ethanol does, but, um...
Whatever you do will be, will be governed and adhered to by state law, correct?
Right.
We, we, we can't get your testimony from...
My point, it's the same thing.
The state regulations will be followed for all safety measures.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I think there's all the questions that are directed to you, Jackson, I'm good. Do you have any others? Do you have any others?
I would just say that the fire suppression system that is currently in place, there is a, the school has a hard-piped fire suppression system in the building currently, and that obviously would be a part, I know there was a gentleman with a question on the fire, that it burns hotter than anything else, but it is all sprinkled with a hard system already.
Thank you. So just a few closing comments. Obviously, the board has heard a lot of testimony from the applicant and our witnesses and from members of the public. We understand, appreciate the public coming out, making their voices known, making their concerns known. Couple of things I'd like to emphasize or reiterate in response to the public comment. So there's a lot of testimony regarding the fact that this is not an industrial zone, this use is permitted in industrial zones. We acknowledge that. That's why we're here before you tonight, seeking that variance. We, from right off the bat, our position was that this is a use variance, we know it's not permitted in the RA zone, but we think it is appropriate for this property because of the specifics of this proposed use. Now, is this building, is this property uniquely suited for this use? We think so, because of the proposed micro-business, proposed micro-facility, and the dimensions, the size, the layout of the building is, works well for this proposed building with minimal additional site improvements. No light impact on neighbors because of the hours of operation and the minimal security lighting that is required. No noise impact because all the operations are going to be conducted within a building. Obviously, I think based on the public comment, everyone here on the board knows, odor is the big concern. That's obviously the concern that was raised most frequently by neighbors and is frequently raised on cannabis applications. The applicant has testified at some length about the state-of-the-art odor mitigation system proposed for this building. And let me just emphasize, this is an indoor facility. Some other cannabis facilities I know the board has seen are large outdoor grows without odor mitigation, substantially more plants than what are proposed for this use. This is small in scale. The odor is controllable through these state-of-the-art systems. And just for the board's comfort and for the comfort of the public, if this application is approved, we're going to have to come back before you to give you more specifics on everything before you are tonight, on the layout of the site, on the proposed systems that we, that we plan to put in place. There will be further detail on the, not only on the engineered aspects of the site plan, but on the odor mitigation and on the odor impacts to neighbors as well. This is a bifurcated application. We think this is an appropriate use for the reasons identified in the testimony, but the board will have a chance to review this again and hear more of the details on all of the technical aspects and all of the specifics. So this approval would not give the applicant carte blanche to simply go forward without further checks and balances on everything that we testified to here tonight. So I'd ask the board to give us that chance to continue the process, move forward, come back to you with full-engineered site plans and further detail on the site plan and the odor mitigation system and every aspect of the proposed development. On that point, I would note that many of the concerns raised by the public, for example, raised out of respect to the impact to the daycare and other neighbors, are informed more by what-ifs than by what was actually testified to and the evidence that has been put before you as to the systems in place. There is speculation as to, you know, there must be odor impacts, and that's going to cause impact to the neighbors and to the daycare. I don't think the evidence bears that out. I think the odor mitigation system, through our testimony from an experienced industry representative, these systems are effective, and we will provide further detail at the site plan stage. And I think the board should consider whether it's making its decision based on the evidence before it, or what-ifs that aren't based on the technical details of the system. I also don't want the board to be misled as to statements regarding what federal law may require as to distance from a school or a daycare. It is not the case that a licensed cannabis facility in the state of New Jersey has to be 1,000 feet or more from a school or a daycare or a playground. There are numerous cannabis facilities, municipalities across the state that are substantially closer to such facilities. Many towns don't have any proximity limitations at all. It is simply not a requirement that a cannabis facility be located at any certain distance from those types of uses. So I don't, I want the board to be misled into thinking that federal law somehow requires denial. It does not. Now, you heard ample testimony from the applicant as to the operations, you heard ample planning justification from Ms. Morrissey as to the reasons why this is a suitable use for this location, an adaptive reuse of this building, minimal development, no additional density, minimal traffic impact, if any. We think, simply put, when the board considers the evidence before it as to this, as to the specifics of this application, without being swayed by the what-ifs, by the, what could potentially happen, I think the evidence clearly bears out that this is an appropriate use for this location, the property is particularly suited for it, and the evidence bears out that there's not going to be any substantial detriment to the public. And we'd ask the board to approve this application and give us the chance to come back for site plan approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Any questions this way? Well, I guess I, I ain't going this time. Somebody better come up with that. I only ask that if somebody make a motion, you give the basis for your motion, whether it's approved or denied, what your opinion may be regarding what you've heard and why you're making the motion, and also when you vote, please also give some comment regarding why you're voting, the way you vote.
I make a motion to deny because it's not in an industrial area. And two of my children and four of my grandchildren went to that nursery school, and they would not go there if that was across the street from them.
I'll second that motion. So a vote, when you do the roll call, a vote of yes is to deny? That's correct. And if you could, as I say, elaborate on the reasons for your vote, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Leo?
You said Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Yes. Based on the fact that it's a great business, I just hope that's the right area.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes, and I do agree with Mr. Leo. You know, I think we put in place certain things that should be followed, and this is one. I agree, we listen to the public, and I hear you, and in this case, I do agree with you 100%.
Mr. Garafalo?
Mr. Garafalo?
Yes, and same thing, it's just in the wrong place. We don't need to hear any houses.
Mr. DeSasri?
As I, yes, and as I stated in my motion, and also, it's the township, the zoning, the master plan, they wanted an industrial area, and that's where it should be. And I would have no problem if that's where it was.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes, and I've seen a lot of applications come across for cannabis facilities, and yet to see one that would fully satisfy me for fitting all the requirements for zoning, and I would not be comfortable granting a variance for this particular application. I'm fully supportive of cannabis, and I hope that one day we get an application that would work for this town, but I'm not saying it here.
Mr. Felici?
Yes, I love the idea of something happening with that building rather than just sitting vacant and falling apart. I just don't think that this would work to do that building. And after hearing the residents, it's a no-brainer to deny it.
Vice Chairman Iglesias?
Yes, and I think unfortunately, the state tries real hard to make some money, and dealing in the marijuana to me is not always the best way. And then putting any operation that grows an illegal drug, it's not illegal, I understand that, but neighbors are going to be afraid, going to be nervous, and I think they have every right to be, and that's why I'm going to vote yes for it.
What else we got, Michael? We have a couple of last month's- Couple of resolutions. One is we can argue with people that- It's a shame marijuana becomes so friggin' expensive.
It's cheap, yeah, it's cheap. You have to lose it, you're not going to smoke it, it's cheaper.
We have two resolutions for approval, Vincent and Andy Lewis, with the variance to construct the three additions to his existing single family home, and that was granted. Make the voting approve.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Garafalo?
Yes.
Mr. DeSasri?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Iglesias?
Yes.
So the other resolution is for Mystic Photonical Farms LLC, which was denied, and I want to explain the vote on this. The way the municipal land use law reads is that if it doesn't get five votes, it's automatically denied. The municipal land use law also explains that there should be findings of fact and conclusions in your resolution. So there's two ways to look at it. You're finding the fact is that the law says it didn't get five votes, so it went down. But also, they'd like to see a basis for why that happened. So in this case, interestingly, you have four people who voted yes and two who voted no. The municipal land use law also says that people voting on the resolution, the only people voting on the resolution are those who have voted for the result. So in this case, only two people voted no, so they voted for the result of denial, so they'd be the only two people voting on the resolution, which would be Mr. DeSasri and Mr. Ketchum. So I did, you know the resolution went out to everybody, but I also sent the resolution out individually to each of them because there's some findings of fact in there regarding the reason why they voted no to it. So I just want to confirm, Mr. DeSasri, you did see the resolution, and you reviewed, I think there were six items regarding the basis for it, and no vote on that?
Yes.
And is that?
Yes.
That's your feeling?
That's satisfied.
Okay. Jim, you also saw the resolution and saw those six items, and does that accurately reflect what your reasons were?
Yes.
You can, if one of you can make a motion?
I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay. You're sure the minutes will reflect that discussion?
Yes.
Okay, you good here? We are. Good? Nothing else for me? Okay.
Nope, we're good.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Everybody, hi.
Hi.
I didn't watch, no, but I could hear it.